Welcome to the June 20 meeting of the Spencerport School Board. Please rise and join me in the public side, please.
The visions to require the United States of America, interior public, which stands one nation, America, universal, the religion.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We do have quite a full agenda tonight, so we're going to try to keep rolling through this. First order of business is approval of the agenda, can I get a motion? Second, Dave, all in favor, six oh. Unfortunately, Ms. Sarnicki was not able to join us tonight, she had previous commitments and stuff. So we will be a six oh board, but she is here in spirit, that's for sure. Next order of business is privilege of the floor. We have one request for privilege of the floor. Mr. Barney would come to the podium. I don't, you did not write what your question or comment was, so if you could, when you come up, so I can make note of that, please.
I didn't write a specific question. You don't have a specific question to ask, but I wanted to address the board as concerning the previous board meeting. I reiterated at that time some of the answers I've received previously, Mr. Brackett, and some of it. One specific part, one question that I asked for clarification on, and I realize that you, the board takes the position, you will not have to respond to me, I understand that. I've been in business, oh, fifty, I've been in business fifty years. Communication is very important when you're trying to have any kind of dialogue with any organization. You've set up the structure of privilege of the floor as I've expressed previously, some of the concerns and problems I have with it. I think the communication between myself and the board using this method is a good example of the difficulty. I've been doing this for a couple of years now, and this sometime, for the most part, I've been here pretty consistently over the last couple of years. I've asked a lot of different questions, I have my reasons, the board has asked for my clarification just on three different occasions. I gave twice to you, sir, and the board in general, and once to the previous board president, an answer to those questions. The questions were asked again, it'll be for clarification, so why I have to know what I'm doing, and I did all that. And I appreciate the fact, maybe you don't understand, I don't know, we don't, we don't have an opportunity to have any kind of dialogue or communication. Because even if you were to send me something in writing and answer to the things that I bring up here, and I tend, I prefer to bring them back publicly to both you and to the general community. I understand that this is, video was made of this, so that the community can listen to what I have to say, and that's a good thing. I'm trying to generate communications, dialogue between ourselves and the community. I am a member of the community, I consider myself a member of the community, and the questions I have for you are important to me, and they are important to other parts of the community. The way we're structured, we, there's no idea to know that. I'm working myself personally on ways to investigate that, and I'm in the process of doing that, I'd like to let you know that before. Sometime in the next six months, we'll get more on that. I hope to see some things change as far as the basic structure of the way we operate and start communications within the community and the board. Specifically, past, I think it was April 25th board meeting, I asked a question, and I finally got an answer from Mr. Brackett just before the previous board meeting, and I can, let me read to you what I read to you at that time. The answer to my, the first question, my, the answer to my first question is no accepted word. We refer to you as verified for the board in a previous meeting by me. The answer to my second question is less obvious, I would like, I would ask for clarification of Mr. Brackett's statement. There is no curriculum targeted at gender identity after substituting presented with information for the word taught, my original question. Concerning communications with our Spencerport School District community, Mr. Brackett has stated that the current system is satisfactory. I am not satisfied with the current system. Other other fundamental issues are raised in Mr. Brackett's letters, and somehow I did my Eric's talk tonight, 2022 response, which Olympia does if you should have. I will be coming back, I have specific questions, I haven't come together yet, I don't appear, but I have formulated to ask you questions as you're boarding with this format. But one minute, I'm asking you both publicly and directly, sir. See, you told me twice personally, I was sitting right there, twice personally, if you would make a point to respond to my questions faster and a more timely basis. I have not heard a single word from you since this last, since I read this at the last board meeting. I'm going to ask you personally to respond to me in an email, and at the very least, tell me, face to face if you will, and you can tell me tonight if you want to, or you can send me an email, whatever you choose to do. I'm not going to answer your question, at least do that, at least respond. Have the courtesy to at least do that, am I timed up?
Yes, it is, but would you please send me specifically what your question is? Because I do not know, I looked through everything you said, I've looked through every document you gave us last board meeting, and I still do not know what the question is you're asking.
If you could, somebody emailed, said that I could perfectly put, here's what the question is. The original question, if I go over five minutes, I apologize for that, do have it here. This is a question from the April 25th board meeting, I believe. Oh, that's a separate question. I never get, the question to April 25th was, would New York state funding be reduced if general ideology was not taught or presented? Presented is a key word there, maybe not, not part of a traditional curriculum, I understand that possibly, in the Spencerport School District. If the answer is yes, please explain how, for what reason, I've never had an answer to that question yet. I'll leave this copy out of the table, you have another one. But also, coming back to the other questions.
Mr. Barney, if you can find those questions and email to them, email those to me, that would be helpful.
I'll send you an email. I will send you an email for clarification to our discussion tonight.
That'd be great.
Should you respond to that, I'll make a detailed response to that sometime, I'll be out of town tomorrow, so probably some Thursday. Please respond to me promptly, and then we can discuss it properly in the next board meeting, all right, sir? I hate this system, and I'm.
I understand you don't like this system.
It's not conducive to any kind of proper communication between myself and you, or between this community and you. Just the way I feel, sorry.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, moving on, next order of business is consent agenda, I don't know, do we have any students? Okay, all right, with that noted, can I have a motion for consent? Lori, can I have a second, Mike, all in favor, six oh, thank you. All right, Board of Education reports. Well, let's, I'm going to jump right to the more important stuff in hand versus what's been going on with the board and stuff, so. I'm going to read a little statement here, and then move on from there. Whereas after due consideration, the Board of Education of the Spencerport Central School District selected Ties Englewich to serve as its new superintendent of schools. And whereas Ms. Trusink, which has accepted the board's offer of employment to serve as superintendent of schools. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Ties Englewich as its new superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2023 upon terms and conditions of employment as set forth in the negotiated employment agreement. Could I have a motion, please? Megan, second. Lori, all right, we're going to do a roll call vote here, just write all this down. I am voting yes, Mr. Maselli.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Sarnicki is absent, but I do know that her vote would have been yes as well. Mr. Jabaro, yes. Ms. Sargis.
Yes.
Ms. Stone.
Yes.
Thank you, that passes, six oh. And now, let's finally finish this off. Whereas the Board of Education and Ties Englewich negotiated and agreed to terms and conditions for an employment agreement consistent with the New York education law and other legal requirements. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the employment agreement negotiated by the parties and authorizes the board president to execute such employment agreement. Could I have a motion, please? Lay out, Mike. And roll call vote, I am voting yes, Ms. Maselli.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Sarnicki is absent, Mr. Jabaro, yes. Ms. Sargis.
Yes.
And Ms. Stone.
Yes.
Congratulations.
I just humbled by this opportunity, I want to thank, obviously, my wife, Carrie, my stepson Carson, all my colleagues, my close friend Sean Elms, just for supporting me through, pass, through my journey here in Spencerport. I love this district, and I can't thank you enough for giving me this opportunity to lead it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So also then, during consent agenda, we had the opportunity to approve two new administrators to our team. I'd like to just take a moment just to kind of recognize those individuals, and really welcome to the Spencerport team. Going to start first with our newest member of the Taylor Learning Community, Danielle Hope. Danielle is going to be appointed, was just appointed as the principal at Taylor, and we're so excited that she's elected to join Spencerport. Danielle is just an amazing educator, and she's going to do great things for the Taylor Learning Community, so Danielle, thanks for joining us, and congratulations. In addition, the board just approved as well a new high school assistant principal, Angel Schmidt. Angel is a resident here in Spencerport, but she's going to be joining Mr. Bicat's admin team as AP at the high school. Angel is well known here, she's served on various committees, and has just really been able to exercise her expertise in so many different areas. So we're really excited that Angel joined the high school team, so congratulations, Angel.
Wow, Sunday night, we should probably just end it right there. Congratulations to both of you, thank you for joining our team, we really appreciate you bringing your talents to Spencerport, so thank you so much. Board of Education reports, I'm just going to pass around the table here, if anybody's got anything.
Yeah, this has been a great night. Can't wait to see all the great work that's going to happen in the future.
Pass, thank you all of that. I just want to take a brief moment to say thank you to district employees, far and wide, who helped us so many year-end celebrations already. From elementary school to middle school, there was a lot of exciting moments for our students, but I know that takes a lot of work and a lot of organization and careful planning, and I am very grateful for everybody that's involved in those celebrations. I do just want to part one event that's coming up after the school year here, our high school jazz band is playing at the Rochester International Jazz Fest. So if anybody plans to attend, do try to attend on July 1st at 3:45 Gibbs Street Stage, I know it's going to be a fantastic performance.
Nice, thanks.
High school graduation Friday, 7:00 PM, I will have tissues and not be on stage.
Just want to say one thing, you know, I appreciate her persian floor, people come and speak, and in some regard, I wish you had more, right? But, you know, in our defense, we have a gazillion committees in this district that always ask for community and parent involvement. And that's where I think dialogue could and should happen. So I can appreciate the spirit we're saying, but it looks like we do have those opportunities for communication back and forth. This may not be the venue for that, right, but we do have that.
Yes. I appreciate that, Dave, that's, you're absolutely right, so we appreciate that. All right, so with that, we are going to turn it over to Cabinet.
Thank you, so, you know, as we know, over the past few years, we've had the opportunity to really kind of look at what's important in our branding. And so Ms. Cypher and Mr. Price are going to join us and kind of provide an overview of the direction which we're heading, so. From that, Darren.
Well, I'll start. This, this particular initiative, as Mr. Stinkler mentioned, started, you know, just before COVID. And with COVID, we took a pause, it was a pause with the committee, and then through our efforts with the capital project, we formed the committee back, understanding the need for focusing on items of that interest in branding, so.
We clear a room. That was amazing.
Do we show up for him? No, this is a great opportunity to revisit branding, like Darren said, back in 2020, there was conversation as it related to more athletics and recommitting to the S Fair. COVID hit, so it really took a back burner on everything, so, and rightfully so, branding has not been a priority as it should be. So this past year with the capital project vote and with the strategic plan, we were charged to kind of get a core group together about branding and what will we need for some different charges and purposes, so. The agenda for tonight is pretty much to give you an update, what we were charged with as a smaller group, what we've done as far as branding to date, priorities being set for capital product and recommendations moving forward, and what our action steps will likely be.
So, as you can see here, just as what I mentioned, you know, the committee initially started early 2020, pandemic came. We came back with the capital project, so capital project, as you folks all know, we're doing secure vestibules. But the secure vestibules aren't just secure vestibules, they're, they're the place where we welcome in families, students into our schools. So they are, you know, very much the greeting place, the, it really sets the tone for the entire building. And so we wanted to make sure that the Spencerport brand was properly implemented in the vestibules. And so in our discussions back in April, we said, we need, we need the input of this branding committee, we need to bring back the branding committee. And somehow I joined the branding committee.
No, no, you're co-chair. So I went back when we were first talking about this, because these are little snippets that I have about Spencerport's history. And when I was on boarded, I think it was in 2018, I got that little slip of paper and then two material swatches of uniforms, and that was my branding onboarding, that's all I got, and it was, okay, Lynette, here you go. So through the years, finding out different pieces of our history, right? So 1949 was the, when Spencerport was established as a central school district. Ten years later, we were called the Rangers because the DNC named us the Rangers based on the range. That's the only documentation that we can find on how we got that name, but it stuck, so we've had it since 1959. So I think that that's kind of a neat thing to kind of keep pushing forward, that history piece. I know that Spencerport is a very close knit community, everybody's lifelong residents, and, you know, we had Pearl Newman here, you know, back in December, and she's singing a Spencerport song that I wasn't even familiar with. So it's really trying to get those archival pieces together, you know, for generations to come. And here's our branding today, so again, you know, it's, I think it's been trying to do it with fidelity, that the Starburst has been attached to academics, instruction, the district type initiatives and programs. And then the S in Rangers, more of the sports, athletics, extracurriculars. I'm not sure how long music has had their logo, but that's been around for a number of years, and, you know, bigger groups like Ranger Robotics. You know, it's, it's exciting that they're successful and they're having more logos and stuff, so it's kind of nice to acknowledge those identity pieces, but yet still kind of keep some kind of parameters and approval process in it and collect it. So there's some consistency around that, whether it's colors or, you know, the logo, Rangers, those kinds of things. The cup was more of a graphic element, not a logo, but when we received feedback from the last branding committee in 2020, elementary schools have consistently said that the existing bear is too scary with the teeth and as the mascot. So for the younger level, elementaries, I thought maybe we could do some social media with a friendlier bear, and so alumni, Andrew Colafredi, he came up with some designs, and then we had the naming contest, and then the branding committee pinned Spencer. So we do use him, he's very popular, we don't really have a set purpose for him, he's more of a graphic element. So just want to put that out there, that he's more of a visual.
So in February, March, our architects, designers came to us with some renderings, some visual renderings, as well as samples of what the vestibules could look like. And as I mentioned earlier, in that moment, we, we wanted to get some, we wanted to firm up, yes, this is our blue, and this is how much blue we should have in our, in our vestibule, this is our, this is our gold, right? This is the proper gold that we should be using, and how much gold should we have in our vestibule, right? And so again, going to making sure our secure vestibules aren't just secure vestibules, but they're, they're an opportunity for us to welcome and introduce into our studio toward our business. And so we took that information from them, and we brought that to the, to the branding committee and had that, you know, provide some input in terms of how much blue, you know, did you, do you agree with the current blue, right? How much gold do you agree with that, are there any other colors? You know, and we talked a little bit about materials as well as font, we have, there's a little signage in there, so we talked about what font is appropriate to use in terms of signage, so I'll just hear more about that as we go on here.
We haven't really addressed branding as it relates to the strategic plan, as you know, we're still in that process. It's probably got a pin in it right now as far as with the transition and tie's leadership. But we don't want to lose sight of branding will be a critical piece once decisions are made or, you know, implementation starts to come about with the, with the strategic plan. Will there be a new, you know, keywords or, you know, living for tomorrow today, or will the education empower, you know, those kinds of things? Will we need to kind of adjust? Those are decisions that will still need to be made, but not in this report, so it's still TBD, basically. But I wanted to put that in there just so that we acknowledge that that was one of the targets that we had as a group, just as a kind of a placeholder. So given the timing of the capital project, and we have this small core group of 11, we just sent out a quick survey just to find out, okay, are you still married to the blue and gold? Are you married to the logos and those kinds of things, just to get the preliminary feedback? And so as you can see here, we had seven respondents, and of those, the majority felt like we should keep the Starburst and then the S Fair separate, so we have a district one and then a sports one or an activity. Then for the district logo, logo should we keep the Starburst, and it was 100% yes. I'm just going to breeze through.
He just went to the branding committee, right?
We did have great content, too, so I just, I'll hand a little bit there, because I started on, filled out the survey for us. So with the, as you can see with the athletic logo, there's a little bit more diverse opinions, but the Rangers with the S was the most popular. Now, you know, we'll have this information, we'll keep moving it forward, but, you know, with leadership of Ty and the board, we'll see, you know, how those things kind of come about. Then the next slide, this speaks more to the vestibules that Darren was talking about and having that conversation around that welcoming environment when, you know, a member of our community, whether they're a first time visitor or, you know, a parent or community members who are in and out of our schools all the time, what do we want that to look like if they're like?
And so if you see the questions, four and five, they're really the same question, but four is for elementary, five is for secondary schools. And so there is, there is, the results show that there's differing of opinions on which one we should use. When the committee last met, we felt it was most important, committee felt it was most important to have consistency through all schools and not just have a logo, a specific logo for elementary schools as you come in, or our middle and high schools. So the committee did agree that the Starburst would be best for all schools as you come in to those schools.
Is this going to go out to the community as well, to kind of get an opinion from folks, as to what they see? Or are we going to simply, you know, stick with what the branding committee, again, branding work is tough, and you can get 50 different opinions about every little thing about it. But are we thinking of trying to get some community input?
So for this particular exercise, we're looking to take it to that level. I think the, the branding committee will have a variety of exercises open doors in the next year or two, which would, you know, require more input, but this particular exercise primarily focused on the work in the vestibules and how branding plays into the capital projects.
I think with a strategic plan, too, as we start to kind of bring that to fruition, obviously this kind of goes hand in hand, like, and that's shared, and obviously we've then have a broader audience who would see the need that I can.
Okay, thank you.
Then the official colors, like I said, you know, I could use the little scrap of paper with the writing on it, but it's, the Pantone colors, unified and keeping what we have, then there was conversation about the gold being a little bit overwhelming if that's the dominant color. So the group from the survey said that the primary dominant color should be navy with the accent color of gold. And so then when we got more into the granular, it was either 91 or 82, but, you know, it's not like overwhelmingly gold and just a little bit of maybe. So that was pretty clear that, you know, they wanted the gold as an accent.
Which again, may sound obvious to us in Spencerport community, but for designers coming in, they're not entirely sure. They don't know how much gold, you know, matters to us, how much blue matters to us. So another question that was really good for this, this branding committee to go through this exercise.
Are these the Pantone colors that we've been using, or their designers suggest any changes?
Yes, these are, these are the colors that we have been using, and this is where we're going to move forward. The challenge, there is a challenge, right, is being able to turn that pant. Um, is being able to turn that pantone into a paint color, right?
Well, and so there's also a challenge because how a pantone color looks on something like a T-shirt is much different than how a pantone color looks on a wall or on a countertop or whatever it is we're doing.
Yeah. So like the blue tiles that they shared with us, uh, that will be found in the bathrooms and the, the vestibules, right? That's not a direct match to our pantone, right? All things will not be a direct match, which, which is going to be okay, right? But certain branding elements must have our probable pantone color, utilizing our probable pantone color and, uh, for blue and as well as gold, right? So, uh, with our, with our designers, we talked about, shouldn't, should we select a blue from Sherwin-Williams that looks close? And, you know, we discussed, we said, no, we want, you, we want Sherwin-Williams to use their technology to match the pantone as close as possible when creating blue paints, right? And then, so it, but there's, there's a lot of discussion around how do we make sure we stick to our blue goal? Um, so it's, 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 it's important for us to, to firm up that that's our blue, that's our goal. It's a next, it's another exercise to how do we make sure we stay consistent? Cause as you drive along the district, you see there's, there's a variety. There's a variety of, of.
Sorry. So, you know, right back. Okay. So then the next one is fonts. And I will say upfront that with the fonts, there was no decision to be made, but it was part of the conversation. Fonts provide that visual, whether it's in signage, letterhead, logo, website, you know, those kinds of areas that we use. But for athletics, it's primarily the freshmen or collegiate. Then there was conversations on, okay, for what about female? What about, you know, those kinds of things? And, uh, the Times New Roman was ranked the highest. Uh, and I think that was more for like emails and letterheads, but no definitive decision has been made, uh, as far as that goes. But I just wanted to give kind of form of progress report. We really wanted to get Darren and the capital project going because, um, you know, his voice just resonated in my brain all the time that these decisions needed to be made three months ago, you know, to keep things on track and on schedule. So, um, these are things that we know will still need to be done. And then lastly, there was conversation, I think we've all seen where our community embraces navy and gold, you know? And sometimes it's a variation, sometimes it's not. Sometimes they ask us for, uh, use of our logos, sometimes not. But, you know, do we continue to, you know, cooperate or collaborate around those colors? Um, let them use our logos, let them, you know, build that affinity to our district. And the group said, yes, you know, those feeder programs, um, you know, I get calls from tops for graduation cakes. You know, I mean, it's just that sense of pride in their community. And so I think that the group really felt like that was important to share and embrace the fact that outside user groups are going to be using it. Now that said, you know, there are some unacceptable uses and we try to manage that as well, but that, that will be coming as part of hopefully with enforcement, but, um, that's a whole other, uh, topic, I think. So.
Lynette, were you actually thinking about going through the whole trademark process or not? I know it's expensive.
Yeah, I was going to try to find if anybody had anything on whether, cause the Starburst was 2003. So I don't know if anything was trademarked then, you know, as far as the legal counsels or anything. Um, you know, I'm not sure. I think it was 19 something, 89 or 90 that we had the S bear Rangers. So I'd have to go back and try to dig up and see if anybody had done that before.
Right.
Lynette, so if tops or someone reaches out and asks, do we have or would you have just a, a document, a style guide? That, yes, you can use it so long as, you know, you don't stretch it vertically at this, you know, all, if you're using these funds, these are.
So right now we have, uh, authorization letters saying to whom may concern. Inserting here has permission to use our logo for the first, you know, purpose of, and then it'll be like personally for a cake and kind of write it in and then, you know, uh, or if it's, you know, a logo for one of the feeder teams, you know, soccer or whatnot. Um, and then they have it, they have it on file. We've also granted permission for people to take pictures, you know, like for robotics when we have volunteer, you know, we give them media passes and that kind of thing. So it's the same kind of thing as long as, you know, we've got those checks and balances there. So to your point, yes, it would be a little bit, um, more enhanced once, you know?
Yeah.
Get further and, yeah. So these were the recommendations that we have so far. And again, it's, it's kind of a fluid and ongoing process. Right now it's short term with the capital project and then long-term, of course, we'll want to keep, um, building on this effort and enhancing it in, you know, Ty, I'm sure we'll have some ideas as well, you know, from a leadership perspective. But, uh, number one, the vestibules to be consistent. Um, separate logo for the district and athletics, uh, and then navy gold with the accent colors. So that's what we have right now. And then moving forward, we'll start to work on, you know, the style guide, um, you know, the authorized use of the approval process. Cause right now it's, it's just communications, but there's no authority there. It's just, you know, if I see misuse, I connect with that person saying, you do not have authorized use. But I don't have, you know, it's not an official, so I need that official weight behind me, I guess is what I'm saying. And then implementation. So, you know, sharing it with our community and stakeholders. Cause Darren and I were talking earlier about, you know, do, we need to get robotics back in the room. We need to get music back in the room to say, okay, what's working and it's not working and what's helpful.
Yeah, I think that the trademark gives you that authority that you're looking for and stuff to kind of enforce use of it appropriately and stuff. This is good work. Good work.
Questions?
I, I like that y'all are getting it formalized. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, our, our next item is just policy review, uh, our second read. And Mr. Solzner is going to join us and provide us an overview for real.
Thank you for having me once again. Excuse me. So I'm here for policy six, four, seven, three of social media. Uh, this is second read, uh, policy last came before the board at the last meeting, I think, six. Since that time, there's been no changes, comments or questions regarding the revised language to the policy. And, um, I really don't have much unless you have more feedback or any questions that I can take those and work with that. Otherwise I would ask that you approve the policy of this second.
I think most of your approved policies, four, seven, three.
All right. Second, lay up all favor, six, oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Before I can introduce, um, sure, Woods can provide a review of our reserve funds. Rick?
Thank you, Ty. So you've all seen the slide deck before. I've just updated the most recent numbers. But the reason it just can't be, um, questions is, well, first of all, reserve funds, separate accounts, separate scores, all the rights are very well, um, under general educational laws to see how to use them.
Cause you have like.
Yeah, there's not the right.
Yeah. It was a dark time.
We don't want to revisit it. That's like, oh, there.
I'll tell you what, since you guys.
We have.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, uh, is Cory, you know, that's the updated one. Again, that would be on me, not Cory. So the reason it can't just be any questions is because under policy 5512, uh, we're really here to show you, prepare and submit an annual report, which will include the balance. So what you see in front of you and hopefully here is that information. That is cool. Okay. Next slide, reserve funds, again, uh, separate accounts with specific laws governed under education and municipal law. The next slide, again, I think the important aspect here is, as I've mentioned in the past, surplus is really revenue over expense. Okay. Deficit is when your expenditures are more than your revenue. So the next slide with reserve funds with the bar chart. I think that's probably one of the better slides that you run through here because this is really identifying for you that surplus, the revenue over expense. You can see that in the earlier years, there's not that much space as on the right side.
Where, where is the line?
Is it this side?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You'll notice in the, right in, in 2012, really up through until about, you know, 2017, even 18, those, those numbers are very close. Okay. So what does that indicate? It means that we were budgeting very tightly. Our revenues were almost the same as our expenditures, not generating a lot of surplus to build the reserves. Over the last couple of years, in large part because of federal stimulus and how we've managed the budget, we've been able to generate a little bit more surplus during the same. Any questions on that? Are you guys good? So again, from the state comptroller, you're going to, you know, the board administration really needs to identify and ask themselves, you know, these particular questions. Does the reserve fit within the complement of, of the long range financial plan? Are they in the best interest of the taxpayer and has the board reviewed all reserves currently established? This is what we're doing tonight. Um, and I would say, um, we do all of those things as, especially when we get to near end, when you're making a decision about how to allocate the reserves, why we're allocating it the way we're doing, uh, having that conversation with the external auditor, with the audit committee. So I think we're meeting all those objectives. Will you, Cory? No, no, it's not you.
Nope, nope. Sorry. I just want to kind of emphasize, we have not, from our external auditors, had any issues with the way that you all have been doing business for the past several years in terms of these reserves and making these decisions. We're, we've been pretty tired of, of all those.
Yeah, we're usually complimented, uh, by our external auditor. Really the, where the impact is, is when you have the state controllers and their future policies and you don't, um, you don't have this kind of meeting, then that's what, because it's their opinion. And if you don't, if they don't have anything to go back to, then, um. So I think it's fair, this was kind of a conversation. So often makes it a little less, um, a little less, even districts on their own to kind of wait through it and give, makes it a little more grander, a little more guidance on a lot of these reserves. There's a lot of the different ways they do this.
Would an auditor comment, um, on the amount held in reserve or just whether the amount went into the court?
Depends on the policy and depends on what the board is approving.
It depends on the auditor.
But, but normally they want, they want to reference that to something. That's why I always say I want an audit trail.
Okay.
This is our audit trail. So as we go through this and you'll see, oops, Cory.
So, so one of the things we did over the years and stuff is, you know, there was a time when the comptroller was saying, you're saving too much money. You're, you're too much in reserve, too much. And it was just, it seemed to resonate ridiculous with the boards that, that were seated over the past decade that, well, that's silliness that we would be saving too much. As long as we're not overtaxing our community, but we're able to find ways through tight budgeting, tight spending and have reserves that we can then replenish. Why not keep those things in place so that long-term sustainability is, is available for us and stuff? That's been a big part.
Right. But at the same time, we need reasonable reserves to, we're not getting.
And, and that's, and that's, that's the hard part. What's reasonable? You know, what is, what is that subjective term mean? It means something different to the different controllers.
Yeah.
Over the past, you know, 13 years, um, and, and, but it means different things to the different boards too.
Of course.
And that's actually, again, what we're going to see a little bit later on. So again, these are the different, um, you know, categories of different reserves. This first group is what we use on a regular basis. The, um, crew, crew liability reserve is more of a, uh, a paper number, more so than anything else. Um, and, you know, restricted for capital purposes, those are the ones really needing both authority and approval to do. Again, just broken this, you can see this as to what our balance is for each of the years of 2013, broken into those different categories.
Or can you just real quick on that? Okay, good. So if you go back to like 2014, we're, we're up in around 20 million, so. Yeah, perfect. Well, that is really perfect. Yeah. Keep going down a little bit further. So, you know, we dropped from 20 million in, in, in reserves in 2014 down to 13, um, just a few years ago. And now we're kind of finding our way back up to a little bit larger reserves and stuff. So which really ties back to that graph. Do you see it?
It, it started with the audit committee. We have heard about districts being questioned for having, you know, resources allocated both too much and too little. It's been very difficult to find out what is the right number. That's the question we ask all the time, that what is the right number? And we've never really got a clear answer on what is the right number to have in reserves.
Okay. So this is just a little sort of history for it for the 23 and 24 budget. You can see in 2023, uh, we had to subsidize or balance our budget by using reserves from the, uh, ERS and the workers comp. Uh, and for 2324, uh, given the increasing foundation aid and the use of federal stimulus, um, we did not have to allocate any reserve. We did however, appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the debt service fund. You know, we did it and that was really in large part to help with the hundred thousand dollar on the expense side for what they call the capital outlay project. So now we're able to spend up to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, receive aid in the following year, which is really going to, I think, help offset, uh, some of those losses that we had in those tough years, uh, for the operations and maintenance. So we can attribute that to some of the building, uh, capital repairs. This is tentative. Uh, all I'm doing here is showing you, you'll see later on that we are going to have a surplus. So we're saying we're going to use, uh, the ERS and workers comp, but yet we're able to replenish that. So the net effect is zero. Uh, if you recall, we had a capital project vote in December. Uh, this was unplanned, but we took eight hundred thousand dollars from that capital reserve for buildings. Um, out of that reserve, overproofed, um, and so you'll see that decrease there. And then this is the estimated replenishment. You'll see that with a financial report. So again, workers comp, used to pay workers comp claims, there's no max. Here's historically our accounting for it. Really it's just repeating information that you've already seen in prior slides. But again, uh, I think it's part of what we come back and share with the state comptroller, things that we reviewed. This is covering all of that. So this is where I think in part to what you were asking earlier, when they say how much? Okay. We have to have a rationale of how much we have in each, uh, of our reserves. Okay. So for the workers comp, we currently have 1.4 million, okay? The prior rationale that we used to use many years ago was we just multiplied four times whatever the expenditure was. Okay. So the prior rationale in this case would have been 1.5 million, okay? Over the last couple of years, uh, the board has sort of given the head nod to use a different rationale. So that's what we're using now. So you can see that 5% of payroll is a minimum, 10% is. So that's what we're using now. So you can see that five percent of payroll is a minimum, ten percent is a max. And those, what would be those numbers, and you can see that based on that, we're a little bit lower and we could actually apply funds to there to get to that level. And that would be within, I think, the guidelines of what the board is setting, so that the, the comptroller may have an opinion. Okay, but I think we're covered.
Where do we adopt the rationales from? Is it industry practice or how, how do we devise our?
So probably about three years ago, I really delved into this to see what other districts were doing. So really, it was a combination of many other districts, as I analyze that. And I, I preferred the, the five percent, ten percent. Now, you know, the board could certainly say, you know what, those numbers are too high. I'd rather go, you know, two percent, five percent. Uh, but those were numbers that I had seen through many of the districts I would have.
So there's been times in the past when we've had to do this, you've gave recommendations like A, B, and C, and what we thought was a fair number. I mean, I still remember those that comes just happening.
Yes.
You said, let's go three times or four times or five or percent. We say, wow, and what's high, what's low, we would say, okay, go with this, so. Yep, and we spent a lot of time on this topic in many, many, um, three or four years ago, talking about how to manage this based on what we're up to. If it wasn't state comptroller, audit results and everything else, was kind of put us in the best position in terms of funding our reserves while the same time advising our exposure to an audit or to a negative.
And actually, even with a state comptroller can still have an opinion that we're potentially overtaxing. So unemployment, again, used for unemployment benefits, you know, maximum contribution is defined. Historically, this is the accounting of that. You'll notice that we haven't really had to replenish that over the years. And our reserve targets, our current balance is six sixty two, typically we balance, we budget about twenty five thousand dollars. Same as thanks, like the hundred thousand, the prior rationale, in the current rationale, again, it's a percent of payroll. And that's what those values would be. So again, technically speaking, based on using that rationale, we could apply more dollars in that, and so choose the worst. The ERS reserve, a little bit different. Again, it's used to help offset the cost of the ERS. And again, there's no maximum contribution, starts at a dollar amount. Historically, this is what we've had a balance of. And you can see, uh, when it says expenditures, that's usually the amount that we either use to subsidize and balance our budget. And we typically will refund it that same amount. Yeah, we used to do four times the annual budget, which was five point two. We currently use a percent of payroll. And the minimum on the six point three or maximum will be four. And then again, we're still a little bit below that using those parameters. TRS is relatively new. This was pushed on for quite a while. Uh, legislature finally approved it, made a laws to help pay for the, again, they call it teachers' retirement system, but it's like one who's certificated. So administrators as well. Uh, this is very different. Uh, you can't exceed two percent of the total compensation of the prior year. And then as a max, it can't exceed ten percent of the total calculation. So, uh, again, we've been able to fully fund this to the max two percent each year. The recommendation will be to follow the twenty twenty three amount, which will be about six hundred and fifty thousand. Once we get to that, you'll probably sort of be at that ten percent cap, where you probably won't. The amount that we fund would be very little and will go elsewhere. Liability reserve, again, used to pay liability claims. This is probably one of the more ambiguous reserves out there. You can see historically, we're at five hundred thousand, got it up to a million. And if you recall, last year, our current balance is just under a million. Our prior rationale, we've had a million dollars in there for many years. Last year, I made the recommendation that, you know, we haven't really used it. We're in pretty good shape. Maybe we rethink about reducing that to five hundred thousand dollars. After some events this year, um, and having talked, spoken to our external auditor with the Child Victims Act, he's really recommending that school districts keep that at a pretty high level to address. I'm not sure if you're familiar, there was a, a recent district that just settled. So I think he's spot on with that. So again, I think it should maintain at one point in hours. Taxer, again, this is really based on those what they call Article Sevens. So for those corporations and homeowners uh, that are going to, um, challenge their assessment level. So again, this is information that we receive when they file suit, and we determine what the tax rate would be and the impact, and that's how those numbers get into the tax reserve. Again, fortunately, we've never really had to use this, uh, and been able to maintain that to ninety two. So this is another example. We know with the crazy market, we know that at some point in time, our assessments are gonna skyrocket, right? We may see many more people challenge that assessment, so that they have this type of, um, liability reserve, uh, will be very beneficial. Alright, any questions on that, taxer?
Rick, does, uh, this reserve offer certain protection or be way concerning for example, we have a, um, project. If that were to change dramatically, would it offset that or if they were to legitimize the time of the district?
If they filed an Article Seven, we would determine, you know, because what they have in mind is they have to determine what they think the value of the property is.
Yeah.
Versus what the accessory is. We would take that, determine what the rate is for every particular year. What I've found over, um, the years as I've worked at this is normally what happens when they settle is they don't go back. They get it so that if you're moving forward, so we don't necessarily have to dig in to that reserve, because I think everyone understands there could be a dramatic, a huge impact on, uh, how its companies and schools. So are pilots equipped with this reserve or pilot would, would, this wouldn't really go back to this. Okay, capital reserve for buses, again, um, we've authorized in two thousand ten, we've gone back out, two thousand seventeen, and twenty twenty three. You can see that dark line is sort of where what we've been able to do is roll over, give a balance for one reserve into the other and sort of carry that, so you can see where we're at. This is a, again, uh, a reserve that I think moving forward, uh, we really had to start thinking to look at. My sense is we'll begin to use this in combination with bar. I don't know if we're gonna be able to pay cash for buses, um, once the zero emission regulation comes out. So again, managing this, I think, will be important. Restroom equipment and technology, this is where, again, uh, the original focus was going that after the smart school investment plan, which for us was about two point two million, was gonna dissipate at some point. We want to move towards our one-to-one initiative. We knew that we needed really to have some sort of technology reserve to help maintain that, um, that initiative. We also built in our classroom furniture. A lot of times when we're doing, uh, new projects, sometimes classroom furniture is not needed. Just trying to cap one project. So again, we use that to, um, as we're doing classrooms, to use this reserve. This one's a little bit different. Uh, we actually have two. This is the one that, um, you know, was the older reserve. And then unfortunately, what we didn't put in the language to roll over the balance, so we actually have two reserves, which is fine. The amount of time that you can put money into the reserve, uh, is limited, so in the reserve, we can't do that, but we can pull it out at any point. Okay, capital reserve for what I call building. You can see we've used this quite extensively, two thousand seven, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, um, and now two thousand twenty three, although it's not reflected on here. So again, we've been using this to, uh, maintain a minimum or a minimal tax limit increase when we go out to the capital project. And again, that's all voter approved. So in other words, when we put the, um, when we put it out for vote, it's counting down the length uh, of time and contribute the, the amount that it can contribute. So, uh, those are pretty set. So again, components of a reserve, uh, I think we included the majority of those as part of that. And then I apologize that I didn't send Corey the right, um, PowerPoint, but we got through it, we adjusted. So, any questions?
Is that the panel? I don't think.
It is on mic on my laptop. It's perfect. It's the lighting.
Rick, I just want to clarify, because I might have misunderstood. The contributions are set to a certain length of time. So it's a ten-year term or five-year term, but the money doesn't have to be used within that time. It can stay in that account.
Yes.
At that balance, indefinitely.
Yes.
Correct, correct.
Get out of here.
Rick, moment, and, and with financial. Yes, come PowerPoint.
Any questions? In all seriousness, revenue side, I think we're, we're in good shape. The only thing that has the biggest variance, as I mentioned the last time, is excess cost aid and sales tax. So we'll know that probably come August. On the expense side, the majority of savings that I'm seeing right now are in salaries. Again, in large part due to, um, how we use federal stimulus. When you put those together, uh, revenue is going to exceed expense by about one point two million. Um, and that's what we're looking to, uh, have as a net change in fund balance. I didn't provide school much, only because, A, uh, we didn't have all the information, and B, the expenditures are up to date with the revenues. We probably haven't received any since, uh, March or April, so it wouldn't benefit.
But it's like usual, like expenditures way above revenue.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Add a motion, accept the financial report, please. Mike, second, Megan, all in favor?
Okay, next one, preliminary allocation from the balance. Mr. Maselli didn't mention that he attended the audit committee. So, um, good discussion with the audit committee. I think the biggest thing, what I want to point out here is, uh, item number one. Typically, I have a hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand to, uh, use to appropriate and reduce the levy if needed. I think the Amazon property, um, is a wild variable right now. Um, so really, I don't anticipate using this. But by allowing that maximum, it provides you more of an opportunity to address the tax rate. Okay, recognizing that once in July, we get to this point, um, you know, if you reduce the levy with this, that means your basis for filing now is gonna be lower, okay, which is what Dr. Kim's would share in his benefit presentations. So, um, everything else, um, again, these are up to amounts. Do I anticipate, you know, getting seven million dollars to fully fund the reserves that are listed in D E N F? No, but they're up to amounts, again, provides you flexibility to do so.
Questions, comments? Could I have a motion to accept today? Second, Megan, all in favor?
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then six point six is the ratification of the Sasa successor, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lisa.
Thank you. So we have provided you the executive summary along with a memorandum of agreement, which highlights the changes to the successor contract. So any questions?
Not on the contract, um, and you've got a trouble on working on contracts of late. So if you please, at your convenience, make sure that the sharepoint with all the associated contracts is updated.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion acceptance. Megan, second, Dave, all in favor, six oh. Okay, anything else, sir? Alright. Good to go. We're at seven ten, ish. Um, we do have executive session for several items, so could I have a motion, please?
Think of it as the, ever executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person. As well as to discuss collective negotiation.
Thank you. Second, Leah, all in favor, six oh. We're gonna do executive.